All right, close meeting to order. Stand for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag and the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So first up, we have two public hearings that we have to... You guys are next after we do the... We've got two public hearings. The first, we have a public hearing on the bond resolution, Cornwall Sewer District Shore Road Wastewater Treatment Facility Improvements. So you may recall, we introduced this at the last meeting in November. We have to revise the bond resolution because the estimated cost to do the repairs at the Shore Road facility, we believe it's gone up. So we have to have the flexibility to be able to borrow the money for the improvements. So if I could get a motion to open up the public hearing.
Some more seconds.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. McCarty?
Yes.
Ms. Michaelazzi?
Yes.
Mr. Wilkansky?
Yes. Is there any public comment on the Shore Road Wastewater Treatment Plan? No? Okay. So basically, in the special meeting, we do need to adopt this because we need to, you know, we have to have the borrowing place planned.
Can you, for the public, just refresh, like, what's the revision going to be?
Oh, yes, we're just basically increasing by a million, so...
By one million dollars?
Yeah. Yeah, I'll get you the exact...
Just a few...
Yeah.
What was it, what's it gonna be?
So basically, we needed to go, so it's basically going from, it was either eight point five or nine, going to ten million dollars. So we need to raise the limit. The estimated maximum needs to go to ten to allow us to have the flexibility in case we have to borrow that amount for the... We don't know what it's gonna be fully yet because we're in the design phase and we're also waiting for some permits to come down from the DEC.
Okay.
And basically, the cost increase is gonna be tied to what the DEC says we have to do with the speeding permit. So that, but we have to have the flexibility.
Because you don't want to go out to bond twice.
I understand.
Well, what if it's more?
If it's more, we have a problem. Then we're gonna have to go out and bond twice with the money somewhere.
I mean, like, right now, we believe that...
No, I'm just concerned, like, we might be...
We believe the ten million will cover any of the possible permit requirements that the DEC could put on us. Yeah, the engineers came up with this. So basically, based on what?
Yeah, I saw, okay.
Yeah. And so based on the feedback we got from the DEC, we believe this is enough. But I mean, look, obviously, they can change the state law tomorrow and, you know, they could, but... But anyway, so, yeah, so the maximum borrowing capacity would be ten million. And this would be through the Environmental Facilities Corporation. That's where we borrow money for these projects. For, yeah, EFC. Okay, and so if there's no questions or comments, can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
Some more seconds.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. McCarty?
Yes.
Ms. Michaelazzi?
Yes.
Mr. Wilkansky?
Yes. Okay, so next up, we have the continuation of the public hearing on the proposed local law tree preservation law. We do have Steve Bogan to read the whole memo into the record, or...
No, I think you think best, but if you ask what I want,
Yeah.
I'll summarize the memo for the board.
Sure.
And I have a comment on the draft local law after that. But since this is a continued public hearing, I think the first thing to do is see if members of the public have any input on it. Then you can come back to the board members.
So is there any public comment from anyone in the public on the proposed local law tree preservation law before I have the town attorney discuss his memo? No? Okay, Steve?
As I'm sure the board recalls, you received two letters from the attorney for property owner All Mine of Orange Inc. raising certain objections to the tree preservation local law. And I asked the board to give me an opportunity to review the law, review the memo, and, you know, get back to you on it. And the result of that is this December eighth, 2023 memo, which should be added to the record on the local law. As stated in the memo, most of the objections that were raised in the letters were minor things. Said that some of the definitions were not as specific as they might be. I disagree with that, but in any event, it certainly isn't grounds to not enact the local law. I'm sure you've considered the objections. And if you want to make changes, you're free to do so. But I, as I say in the memo, see no need for that. Another objection is that the local law requires the board to enact certain schedules and to adopt things, like, for example, the list of acceptable replacement trees. The objection is, well, those should be done at or before the time that you adopt the local law. But it's very common that the local law requires further action by a board in order to establish certain terms. For example, a schedule of fees, something along those lines. And in fact, you rarely would enact a schedule or resolution pertaining to your local law until the local law is enacted because the local law might not be enacted. And if that's the case, why don't you adopt the schedule of the resolution beforehand? But the one objection that did concern me, and I devote a substantial amount of time in the memo discussing, is the point that there are some federal cases out there which say, or stand for, I should say, the proposition that requiring one-for-one tree replacement without regard to the circumstances of the development or the nature of the trees being removed constitutes what's called an exaction. And unless there's some rough proportionality between the good to be obtained by requiring the replanted trees and the requirement of replanting trees, there's a violation of due process involved. Now, as I'm sure the board recalls, when this local law was first proposed, there was a provision in it for requiring one-for-one replacement of trees under all circumstances. And the board removed that. What we have in place is a provision saying that applicants for a tree clearing permit or tree removal permit have to submit a tree removal plan showing that they're removing the minimum number of trees required for the object they're attempting to obtain, whether it's clearing the lot or it's building something, and a tree replacement plan showing what trees, if any, they propose to replant to mitigate the generally harmful impacts of tree removal. If they come in with a tree replacement plan which doesn't adequately, or, excuse me, tree removal plan which doesn't adequately protect the trees that are there, it's not the minimum number, the planning board is allowed to say, no, you have to leave these trees in place. You can make clearing envelope much smaller. If they come in and they say, we're not proposing any replacement trees, they have some explaining to do. They have to show that, well, these trees were taken out for a fire break or for forestry purposes, for thinning, or whatever it may be. There's no significant impacts for removal of these. We certainly don't require one-for-one. Three-for-one we'll do, or five-for-one, or ten-for-one, or whatever it may be. You know, the way it's one for ten, I would say that backwards. So that's the way that it's set up. The planning board is given discretion to determine the number of trees that will be removed and the number of replacement trees. That differentiates this local law from the cases cited by the All Mine of Orange Inc. In, like I said, those cases, that provision was in the law. In our case, it is not. However, in the course of reviewing cases cited and letters, tearing my memo, I went through the local law one more time to make sure that there, you know, wasn't anything in there that would be problematic. And I did find one thing which the board should address. Under the definitions, I mean, we took out all the provisions that required the wonderful one replacement. But under the definitions section, the definition of tree replacement plan says, "A plan showing location, species, and details, including caliper, for the one-on-one replacement of trees as part of the proposed land development activity or clearing activity." The words "one-for-one" should be stricken from that definition. And if you do that, the local law will be just fine. See, I think you're gonna be in a position to close the public hearing tonight. You are in a position to act on the local law. We'll seek a review first, of course, and then the local law. But if you do that, you're going to want to adopt the law with the revision that you're taking out, the words "one-for-one", "one-on-one", excuse me, from the definition of tree replacement.
Sure.
If it's the board's pleasure, you can wait until the next meeting. We can provide you with a clean copy and you can adopt that. When you take something out of a law, there's really no need to continue the public hearing or to wait for a clean copy. But of course, the board has, you know, that's up to you. You have discretion to do that. So that's the memo and the proposed revision to the law. If I have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
I mean, in my mind, if, as long as we're allowed to do it, what if we just say, you know, we're adopting this law, you know, with the deletion of, and we give the exact section of it and then...
Opposing the law with the revision, the word "one-for-one" shall be. And you have a resolution on that.
Yeah.
When you come to that, I could probably re-assert that, though.
I think we should just do it. Waiting long enough. So I mean, I mean, unless the board wants to wait on it, you know...
If there's no reason to wait, it's just...
If there's any legal reason to wait, then...
Well, if you're adding something to it, I would...
Yeah, well, then you would have to.
...provide different advice.
We're taking away...
When you're just taking out a minor thing like that, I just don't see as a problem.
I'm gonna get a clean copy, say, next week.
Could we just do it this week? Because it's, we could just have this done and over with, or...
It's the board's prerogative. But the workshop, you have the resolutions on for consideration. But if you want to push it off to next week, you can push it off to next week. But you can certainly close the public hearing tonight.
I think the whole idea is that, you know, there's been a lot of work to get to this spot and we want it to be right. And if it's just changing, making this one revision, I have no problem with closing this whole.
Well, again, it's one week. Whether you're gonna do it tonight or you want to wait a week, it's really all the same, but that's up to you guys.
Okay.
Tim?
Councilman Scott? I'm good with it.
Okay, there.
So motion to close the public hearing?
Yep, motion to close the public hearing on the tree preservation law.
Some move.
Second.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. McCarty?
Yes.
Ms. Michaelazzi?
Yes.
Mr. Wilkansky?
Yes. Okay, is there any public comment on agenda items? No? Okay. Okay, so first off, you know, and obviously, we're gonna... We just spoke about this, but we have the secret negative declaration for the proposed local law tree preservation law. We've got to, you know, adopt this first before we pass the tree preservation law. It would be an unlisted or type-two action. It's a negative declaration. We pass this and then we move on to pass the tree preservation law. So, all right, next up, workers' compensation insurance policy renewal. So as you may recall, in, I guess it was December of 2021, you signed a two-year contract for the compliments, for our workers' comp insurance. And it's been two years. So our comp insurance policy expires on December 31st, 2023. So I've got the Reis Group here, who has prepared three different proposals for the board to consider from three different, including CompAlliance, our current insurer. There's another one, Safety Group 497, and also Perma.
We should pass it.
Yeah.
Let's pass it then.
All right.
Yeah, you want to start?
Yeah. Thank you. My name is Owen McCain. I'm one of the owners of the Reis Group. It's my son, Gordon McCain. So we took the comp insurance and we put it out to bid with three carriers. So we found one that is saving the town a lot of money, a little over seventy-six thousand dollars a year. So if you turn to page four, you'll see the four comp coverage. And it's statutory coverage. I just want to point out a few things. The maximum is one thousand, one forty-five, forty-three per week. That does not include, you know, 207 safe, okay? That's just regular employees. If you turn the page, so Safety Group 497 came in with the most competitive quote. They're run by corporate risk management. They're the manager for Safety Group, which is part of the New York State Insurance Fund. It's the, one of the largest work comp providers in New York State and their eighth largest in the country. Safety Group 497 currently insures 440 municipalities and they have a 98% retention rate. They've issued dividends for 38 consecutive years. So if you turn to page six, we just highlighted the three quotes that came in. There's mostly just three carriers that provide workers' comp insurance for public entities in New York. So you have Safety Group 497. With the dividend, it came in at one hundred eighty-five thousand, one hundred fourteen. Perma came in at three thirty-six, zero forty. And CompAlliance, the renewal is two sixty-two, zero eighty-two. So the, we put the projected dividend in there because they had 38 years at the 35%, so we think it's pretty stable. With, including the dividend, they would save you seventy-six thousand off of, you know, the CompAlliance renewal. And that's, and you can turn the page, it's acceptance or rejection. So, you know, they're, you know, these are the three major carriers for workers' comp insurance in New York State for public entities. And it's pretty straightforward stuff. We also gave you a handout, a little information about Safety Group 497. Does anybody have any questions?
As far as the projected dividend, I'd say it's not that.
Yeah.
I mean, it's still, if I, we were to take that off, it's still in line with...
Yeah.
...with everything.
Yeah, it's still in line.
Could you just explain this, the TPA, Steve?
Sure.
Just explain that, please?
So when, in 2008, when Orange County dissolved the work comp pool, they gave municipalities a choice of taking the claims with them or leaving them with Orange County. It was very expensive to leave them with Orange County. So most places took them with them.
Okay.
So you have three claims left over from the Orange County pool, which you pay, you know? And you need a TPA to administer those claims. And right now, CompAlliance does that. So Safety Group 497 doesn't do that. So we had to go to Triad, who is the TPA for Orange County's work comp pool currently? Because it's Orange County and the college. So they administer the claims for Orange County, the tail claims, and they agreed to do it at that cost of twelve thousand. That's included in the total cost.
Yeah.
Yeah. They were the, I went to a few and they were the cheapest. You know, they'd go to fifteen to twenty thousand to do that. So Perma would do it, too. They're estimating about the same as, you know, CompAlliance, which is one thousand eight hundred, we're to administer those three claims. And at twelve thousand, also, they have to bring the claims data over, right? So there's an IT company involved to bring the claims over. You know, they have to load it in their system.
Yeah, and then I guess just real quick on the, on the CompAlliance, we did, I think it was, it was four thousand, one hundred and thirty-eight dollars. We got what they call a safety dividend.
Where we got that last year or this year?
This year we got.
Oh, so the...
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so obviously, if you sub, even if you subtract that off of this, you're at, what, two fifty-eight? So that, that...
We get this because we don't file a claim, correct?
Well, you get this for a number of things. Like, you don't file claims or you, yeah. Like, there's a certain way they measure it. So, which is one of the reasons why, actually, today, we had a safety meeting and we have these quarterly where we get together with risk management and, you know, the safety officer from the workers' comp and department heads, and we talk about ways to have employees not get hurt and to reduce injuries. That's, that's something that, you know, comp insurance companies want you to have because they don't want your guys to get hurt because it costs everyone more money. So that's something that's been in place for a number of years. And I, obviously, that would continue under the safety dividend.
Yeah, that would continue.
They don't offer any discounts. I know, like, with your, like, your car insurance, if you take certain courses, they reduce it. Would that would be demonstrated, we...
No, but it's a good idea to take the safety courses, yeah. I mean, you know, look at the, you know, the price. None of them saw anybody's price. They just came in and, you know, conducted the...
Okay, so basically, it was basically brought down to you. These three came out independently, sent the bids to you.
Exactly, yeah, independently, yeah.
Okay.
So we met with Jen and Pam as well.
Yeah.
I wrote in Safety Group 497. Yeah, with Josh. And we went through the whole process with them, you know, because they were concerned about whether...
They're the ones that actually have to, so then, obviously, Pam, Pam, you know, deals with the bookkeeping. Jen deals with the claims. And they wanted to make sure that it was gonna be something that was easy to work with. They called Goshen. That was one of the municipalities that currently uses Safety Group. And, you know, Pam had a, Jen had a good discussion with the folks over in Goshen as to how it, as to how it works out. They were satisfied. Pam's very pleased with the dividend and the savings, you know? And obviously, certainly feel free to talk to Pam and Jen about this, but they were perfectly fine with moving it from comp to Safety Group.
Do you have any idea what kind of dividends Goshen was getting for this?
Well, that 35% was across the board to everybody.
Okay.
Yeah. It's not per account. They issued a dividend, it was for everyone who's insured, from 440 municipalities.
Oh, so every, everyone that's in that group gets that flat fee?
Yeah, absolutely. So, yeah, it's a pretty big deal, the clear dividends. You know, the one thing is, their policy hasn't affected date of seven-one. So you'd have a partial policy year this year. Because your, yours ends on, you know, December 31st.
Right.
They'll pick it up on the first and then they'll go to the July 1st and they'll start a new policy on July 1st. It doesn't change any of the numbers. It's just pro rata.
We're just in the middle of their claiming here.
It's in the middle of, they have a common policy year because of the New York State Insurance Fund. So theirs is seven-one. So your effective date will change to seven-one, but the pricing will be the same. It's exactly half. You know, we present it on an annual because it's apples to apples.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any further questions? I mean, look, certainly, you know, we've got to get to someplace by December 31st. So we do have to act on this this month.
Sean? Next week would be okay?
Yeah, if that's what the board wants to do. Talk to Pam, talk to, talk to Jen. You know, the only thing, you know, again, we did is, you know, we wanted to have a, to have a variety of quotes from the insurers to see what's out there. You know, look, if CompAlliance had come in, you know, as the lowest, I mean, there would be no reason to, you know, to change. Or if, you know, Jen and Pam felt like there was such superior service that we were getting, there would really be no reason to change. But, I mean, it's been two years, so it just makes sense to see what's out there.
It's also very well explained, so there's no reason to not to go for this, so...
So I would say, you know, talk to both of them.
With savings.
And, you know, this will be on the agenda for next week.
You mean to vote for it?
Thank you. Yeah, we, yes, we have to, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
So next up, we have the... Sorry, okay.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Next up, we have appraisal of 1455 State Route 32. So our trial attorney for, you know, we have the KJ tax tertiary proceedings and we have the joint litigation, you know, agreement with the school district. And we need to approve of an appraisal of the property, the 1455 State Route 32, which is the well of Route 32. We need to have that for trial. Pat Sealy sent me until... We had actually discussed this at a previous meeting, but we never actually authorized, never had sent me the agreement for us to sign, to authorize. So we need to approve this. This is Sterling Appraisals. This is Bob, Bob Sterling. And so this would be an appraisal of the well property that's needed as part of the trial. So this would be for four thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Is this the town share?
Yes.
Why don't you get on the please?
We are currently in a tax tertiary proceeding over the KJ well property. And we, I mean, they're, you know, seeking reductions in their assessed value, what, four or five, maybe even six years? And we currently couldn't reach, we couldn't reach any sort of agreement. So we're currently in the trial phase of this. And part of it is, you know, they are, we've got to put up our appraisal against their appraisal. And then ultimately, if we can't reach an agreement, then the judge will decide what the assessed value is gonna be based on a number of factors. But we need this as part of our defense. So, and he's asking that we do it tonight. He actually should have given this to me in November, but he didn't. But we need to do it. So it's gonna be, I'm gonna ask you guys to authorize this so I can have Bob Sterling start.
Sure, sounds good.
So next, we have the July 9th flood temporary bridge solution on the Boulevard. I guess just real quick, before I get into this, you know, we successfully submitted our damage inventory. That happened back last month. We're now moving into, we have until, it is January 22nd to get some more paperwork and details into the FEMA GO system. We're currently working on that. We are well over three point five million dollars in damages that we're gonna be seeking reimbursement for. So that's just something that the town attorney, Sean, the town engineer, and Tommy and myself, we've just been working on this. It's just gonna be an ongoing. And this is, this is even more than Idah. I mean, Idah was only really, you know, some basic reimbursement plus the Continental or Road Culvert. This is a lot. I mean, there's, you know, two dozen projects that we're seeking reimbursement on. And so as far as the temporary bridge solution, we kind of had this on the agenda last time. And, you know, I went back and I asked them to come up with a single-lane temporary bridge. You know, because we had the double lane, and the double lane was even more than this. But if you look at it, it's roughly gonna be two hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars to have this for less than a year. And I think part of what, yeah, I mean, and so, you know, and so basically, this isn't just dropping a bridge in place.
No.
This is actually doing engineering and tying the bridge into the road. I mean, this is actually engineering involved in putting on the temporary bridge. It's a sizable amount of money, you know? It's, I know we have residents that, you know, they're very much want us to do this, but it just, it seems, you know, it's like, by the time we have this up and installed, we're probably gonna be halfway through having the bridge, you know, installed and reopened. I mean, I really wish there was like another way. I wish we could just drop down steel plates. But the span is too wide. And, you know, the town structural engineer will not sign off on, you know, metal plates, which would have been the easy solution. But the span is, I think it's wider than 20 feet. So it's, it's just, it's not gonna be, there's no cheap, safe way to do it.
Right, and I think we also discussed, we should gather as far as the amount of traffic that goes through that area.
Minimum.
You're saying minimum. Like, give me, give me a number, like, three cars a day, four cars, how many? I'm sorry, I'm not trying...
No.
I'm not trying to, like, pin you down. I'm trying to get, like, an idea of, like, how many people are really impacted and they just go the other way.
I mean, from a response standpoint, they're not impacted.
Okay.
There's access to both sides.
Okay.
I have not heard of any issues.
Okay, that's all I wanted to hear from you. EMS, you haven't, I mean, if you're retired?
Nope. I don't see, there's no issues there. I know I talked to Michael and Brian and they have a whole development plan and no issues.
Gotcha, so I think, I think then it sounds like we don't want to go and incur this cost.
Yeah, unfortunately, I'm looking at fifty-four thousand dollars in your renting. Like, if you look at the breakdown, you're...
Well, we would also, so look, FEMA would only pay for 75% of this.
Five percent of it, so we're on the...[1734.44] Five percent of it, so we're, we're on the one point five.
We would be on the one for twenty-five percent of it.
Okay, yeah.
So, okay, sounds like we have our, so then, yeah, so then, I mean, look, obviously, my goal is to have the bridge, I mean, I know if you're talking to Sean, he said that if everything lines up, that we can actually, I mean, look, the Culvert took until, what, a year and a half on the Culvert, a year, or maybe a year and a couple of months. Sean wants to have this bridge going, you know, starting construction by the middle of the summer next year.
Okay.
Which would be ideal, I mean, I'm not gonna, I mean, that's like fingers crossed, because you're dealing with FEMA, you know? Okay, so next up, we have the, uh, Office for the Aging, uh, twenty twenty-three Amendment for Senior Transportation. So we do have some good news, they, there's an additional eighteen thousand one hundred and thirty dollars that the county's gonna give us.
Perfect.
For our senior transportation plan, which means that we will have, you know, have an extra eighteen thousand dollars in surplus in that account, for that, so, that's good news, so we just have.
We use it for?
Well, I mean, at this point, at the end of the year, we're just gonna recognize it, and then it'll just go back into the, to the fund. I mean, we're not gonna be able to spend this down, and, this is just extra money, so we gotta sign the contract to get the extra money. It'll just go back into the.
General fund.
Yeah. So it's not like we're gonna be able to spend.
Is that earmarked specifically for?
If we got money for this.
Well, yeah, so sorry, it'll, it'll go back into the, yeah, so basically, we're gonna, there's an additional eighteen thousand dollars.
Right, I see.
We're at the end of the, we're not gonna be able to, the way we get paid is we provide a certain, like, number of units of service, so, you know, we're not gonna be able to, you know, expend the, you know, in time, because we're already in December, and this was for this, this contract year.
Oh.
So.
So we just have the money in twenty twenty-four?
Yeah, we're just gonna have the money, I mean, and if it, if there's a way to do anything, you know, additional, we'll have to look into this, but it, I'm saying like next year, right, so we'll have the, we'll have the additional eighteen thousand dollars, but there's no real way for us to do anything with it, I can't go out and buy a bus, I can't go out and.
You're right, understood.
This is for providing, um, units of service, so the way it works is you get billed based on, like, you gotta provide them with like how many, you know, trips you provided, and, you know, this can go to pay for like some of the cost of like the staff, and for the, and gas, and, you know, different things.
Okay.
You know, I mean, so far, the, the, that program's been performing pretty well, I mean, maybe we're over a little bit on gas, so, you know.
Especially with the price of.
But it's not, it's not, you know, if we'd gotten this earlier in the year, there may have been more we could have done, but.
Well, we have, my understanding is that we're gonna have that eighteen thousand dollars in twenty twenty-four, and we have the whole year to spend it, so what's the drawback in here?
This is for, this is for this con, I'm not saying we should do it.
Okay.
We're gonna have the extra eighteen thousand dollars, but it's not like we can program it for this year, because it's the end of the year. So we're just gonna realize it as a.
So the transaction's now, but we can't use, right.
So that's good news, and we never, just get an extra eighteen thousand like that. The JFS Family Visitor Program, so this is the program we've been running now for the past two years, um, they are charging us to do the same, uh, level of services, um, again, it would be seventy-five hundred dollars, I believe we budgeted ten in, in the budget, um, they would be charging seventy-five hundred, so it's basically the same contract as last time, you know, I, I mean, obviously, I'm, I'm pretty familiar with this, you know, I think you're pretty familiar, I, I don't know about Tim, Tim actually has some questions about it.
No, I'm, I'm good with it now.
You are?
Yeah.
Yeah, the only thing, we've got.
So, how, how do we get, uh, feedback from, uh, people who have received the services? I mean, are there, is there anywhere to find out, um, if they're satisfied, they're happy, I mean, the, just general question?
I think some of the claims, there means that, I don't know if they're kept confidential, but you, you could, um, you know, when you get, we get those monthly reports, it actually tells you how many people get the services, how many volunteers, how many trainings, things like that, um, I will tell, the only concern I had initially, and I did call and, and speak with the director, when I saw the reduction was seven, to seventy-five hundred, um, I was just concerned, because when you're talking about, um, doing this, the coordinator, I was concerned that that service wasn't going to be there in terms of doing, um, intake, uh, home visits, things like that, and I was assured that with the restructuring that they're doing, and they actually hired more people, um, they are still going to do those things with, um, the price. So we're getting the same service for less money.
Yeah, I mean.
That was my understanding of, of my conversation.
Yeah.
With them. And if for some reason we need more assistance with, um, coordination, um, in, you know, more intake, they, they're gonna provide the service, so they could actually do a lot of it. I know one of the goals is for that, for, uh, us to actually have a coordinator and have this hub, and have someone actually schedule and do all the, the services, um, that's, it's really difficult to do, and I can tell you, um, the walk, those work, uh, they, they do it, and they, they actually, they do pay someone to, to do it, so, we, if we had, consider, um, going at that ten, ten thousand dollar level, that's gone, like, that's gone, if someone else is responsible and taking care, well, we don't have to hire, like, it's, it's, it would be a wash, but that they would be actually responsible for, um, providing those services, so that was my understanding. So, um, there seems to be some flexibility if we, we find a need, like, it's not working at this level. That was what my understanding of my.
Yeah, I mean, it does, it seems like the successful programs, they have like a dedicated person to doing it, or like a part-time person doing it, you know, I, that's, I guess, something we can kind of, you know.
They're gonna have more people though, like, they assured me that they're, they've actually restructured, and they do have more staff, um, that are coming in, so that, that made me feel a little bit better, because if you recall last time, I think you and I were on the board.
Yeah.
We signed the contract, and the two executive directors, um, went to another, um, nonprofit.
Oh, yeah, 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 another with like Habitat.
Yes, yes, so, um, I was, so, not that I'm reluctant, I'm, I'm glad, I, I was reassured that the, the services are still gonna be provided the way that we had.
Yeah, no, I mean, I, I don't see any reason not to, not to sign this. Um, okay, so next up, um, yeah, so I'm gonna let, so basically, we have the Automated External Defibrillator AED replacement, I'm gonna let Tim talk about this a little bit, cause he talks about it in a language that I'm, uh.
This is full wear.
Um, Chief Governor, uh, brought it to my attention that the AEDs in the PD and, uh, and the main building near the Town Hall in Monterey, where it was, where it was prior about five, six years ago, when I was building the Grand Sub-10, we got four of them, one for each building, and one, two for PD. And since that time, those AEDs have expired and were never replaced, so, uh, now that we have, uh, a better EMS system in Cornwall, but still PD still gets on the scene first, uh, of, of about ninety percent of the ALS calls that are called out, uh, especially for people who are under explosive, uh, you know, so it's very, you know, imperative that the PD has an AED in the vehicles. That's my take on it, and, and I agree a hundred percent with Chief, that's his take on it also. So he told me that he had none, I said, well, get some, uh, you know, prices and stuff, and obviously, he's looking for the lowest price, and he found some stuff that was not conducive to, to our needs, and it was cheap, and the reason why it was cheap is because it was made cheap, uh, you know, the one AED that, that he was thinking about doing on a lease program, and it wasn't well-made, and it was a bit broken, and probably in about a month's time, and it would never deliver the proper amount of juice for, for any resuscitation. So that, I stepped in and said, listen, let's not go back and out, and so we got a different program, uh, so that's what we started doing. So two big ones that we found, and I've been throwing out of interest on this, cause AFA, American Heart Association, changed their protocols, and as they start off now with one twenty, up to a maximum of two hundred, but then they say, and I've got lawyer talk now, then they say that subsequent shocks should exceed the last shock. So if someone has was caught a throw, all, all AEDs are biphasic. Biphasic means the sensor wave down, and measures your thymastic resistance, which is basically the thickness of your chest wall, you know, three, epidosis tissue was fatty tissue, muscle tissue, bone, lungs, heart, myocardium, that type of thing, and then it goes back, and it, and it tells the machine how much juice or electric energy it needs to deliver to the heart to stop it from, from fibrillating or from stopping from VTAC, those are the two strikeable rhythms. And then, uh, basically, that's what it does, it stops it, and allows the heart to regenerate its own electricity and start a normal beat, so, in the past, AFA's protocol was always two hundred joules, three hundred joules, three sixty. And the reason for that is because what happens is that, as he's probably seen or heard, or maybe talked to other people, and know people that went to cardiac exam, had, uh, you know, been shocked before, a lot of these people are relatively large, their few of them are thin, and don't have very much thymastic resistance and stuff, so, the first two hundred joules last time, that doesn't even work, so it goes right away to the next three hundred automatically, and then it goes to three sixty, if needed, you know, or three twenty-five, or whatever it may be, and, you know, after it measures the resistance. So the ZOES, um, when I, when I looked at the ZOES A3AED, uh, it's a cheaper unit, and it's a good unit for like in-house, and it's not, you know, a couple of reasons I'm telling you why, uh, because the specs, it starts off the joules at one twenty, then to one fifty, then to the maximum two hundred, and that's all it goes. The CR2 with life pack starts at two hundred joules, which is the minimum, then goes to three hundred, then three sixty, and follows the American Heart Association protocol, and goes to the next higher level of joules after some sense, some skeptical shocks if needed, so that's really important. The other thing about the, the AEDs, it came a long way, uh, both will open up, they both turn on when you open them up, and they're both wireless, they both relay all kinds of information, the big difference here is that when people are doing cardiac compressions or CPR, as they're doing CPR, whether it's you or a machine that the, uh, AMAS, or BMS provider has, it's called a Lucas, it's automatic, uh, CPR machine, it would detect, detect V-fibril VTAC or POTS while it's actually you doing CPR or the machines doing CPR, the ZOES still doesn't. It's, it has, you have, you have to take a seven to ten second break to, you know, detect the POTS, you have to feel for POTS, the old school way, now, the, the problem with that is that, and this is what we, we determined over many years of, of research through AFA, is that every time we stop compressions, we lose what's called mean arterial pressure. When we do compressions, we, we're actually pumping the heart ourselves, squeezing the, the lungs out, getting rid of the air, allowing everything to come back to the chambers, allowing the air to come back to the lungs, squeezing it back out, so, so being, we're being the mechanical part of the heart and the lungs, and that's gonna drive the pressure in the body, arterial pressure in the body, it's called mean arterial pressure, or MAP, and stuff. So MAP is really important, once it gets up to about ninety, sixty to ninety millimeters per mercury, it's that you need to keep it at sixty to ninety, that's for the highest, for the highest, uh, you know, possibility of loss, the return of spontaneous circulation, so, when you, when you do that, and you're able to say, okay, hey, it's detecting this V-fibril VTAC, push for shock, you don't need to take your hands or shut the machine off until you actually push shock, so you don't lose that, uh, that MAP, so what, what does that do? I, I know I've talked a lot about this, but what it does, increases the percentage of chance of loss.
Right.
Of between like, anywhere between like twelve percent up to about forty percent, and it's, it's that much higher.
So you're saying we should go with, certainly have two life packs?
I'm, I'm, I'm definitely two life packs for, for the PD unit, and the reason why, on, on the ZOES, the carrying case is open, and, and the pads stick out, and, you know, you know, fireplace, they toss the stuff in the trunk, they toss it in the bag, and it's on the scene of the side of a road, and so you get mud, water, debris, stuff that, that inside the case, and it's gonna damage the machine, you know, these, these machines are like getting between seventeen hundred and two thousand dollars apart for one machine, and I, you know, you don't want to damage it, you know, with, uh, AEDs, the, uh, CR2 is fully enclosed, the other thing too, and the pads on the CR2, it's one pad, whether it's an adult or a child, there's no switching pads, the other thing about the CR2 is that, because New Winton's protocol, what EMS now, that their life pad that paramedics have, on the, must, university connect, it's no taking pads off, putting pads on, you just connect, connect it to the machine, and, and you get to do the whole process, and, uh, so, it's, it's a little bit more money, so, the CR2s, it's roughly about, oh, I think it's like around two thousand dollars, maybe a little bit more, uh, per unit, and, uh, and the ZOES three is, it's like seven, sixteen to seventeen hundred per unit, so we're talking about, about, probably about three to four hundred dollar difference. In my book, I feel strongly that someone's life, and, and we have an opportunity, a chance to save somebody, it's worth spending the extra three or four hundred dollars per unit. I'm not trying to get a machine that's gonna shock and shock the right amount of joules every time, and without having to stop CPR until we actually push the shock button, and, um, and with those, you can lose the MAP, you know, and you have to switch out pads, uh, and you have to, you know, it's open, it's not bad for in-house, cause, you know, if we wanna get like two for, one for the Town Hall, and one for Munter's, we could go back and out, but I, I, many want to see the PD to have the CR2.
Can I ask you a quick question, having been through this training more than one time? Is the, is the learning curve about the same on both of them?
They're, they're exactly the same, it's so simple, this, uh, both these machines, here's the learning curve, open it up, the machine turns on automatically, the machine will say, follow the prompts, it's gonna say, check for responsiveness, you know, call help, or whatever's my saying, some, and then say, apply pads, you know, or start CPR fast in the heart, they don't even tell you on one hundred to one hundred twenty anymore, both of these machines often have the capability, as they're doing compressions with the pads on them, they both will tell you that you're going too fast, or not deep enough, or too slow. So they both monitor how, how you're actually performing your compressions.
Do you have money in the budget?
I have a few questions.
Oh, sure.
I am actually CPR and first aid, um, certified, I coached James O'Neill High School, so I know exactly what you're talking about, um, I do have a question, um, these are total of four machines, correct?
Well, we're four, we, we need four machines.
Okay, so where are they gonna be, exactly?
Uh, two and a PD.
So, police department?
In the vehicle.
Okay, in the past ten years, has there any incident that actually you needed one of these machines?
Uh, between two and four times a year.
Okay, two, and, now that we have the EMS right here with the all fully equipped, aren't they gonna get here before the, we open the machine and?
No, I'm just gonna say, oftentimes, they're first on scene.
They're first on scene.
I see, I see, and where are the other two?
One, one night here, you know, up downstairs in the hallway, but, by the bathrooms.
And be certified in this building to, and administrate this, so not everybody can do this, you can actually shock yourself.
Most, most people are, and also, the, the ZOES, as part of what's called the pad program, public access defibrillator, so basically, a name, you can actually take them, you don't have to certify, you can take them out, open them up, and it's gonna tell you step by step what to do.
Yeah, you'll see them in the mall, I mean, they're for anyone.
Anyone.
That's why they're, that's why they're there.
Yeah, it's called, it's called the pad program.
Yeah, I know, I, it's a, it's a certified.
Yeah, but I, I haven't said, those are good, good questions.
No, I'm just saying, it, it's not a, it's a good chunk of money, that's what I'm trying to see, um, since we're very close, maybe.
Well, that's why I was, that's why I was, that's why I was, that's why, excuse me, I didn't mean to cut you off, but that's why I was trying to maybe break it down, and maybe, cause I'm trying to see the PD have.
The PD should have it definitely, yeah, cause they'll, they get to the scene first.
And, and, and the ZOES, because they're inside the buildings, and it's more what I call controlled environment, and so they're not, uh, you know, ex, out, exposed to the elements, then you can probably do the ZOES inside the buildings.
The other question I had in the, uh, mechanical part of the, um, machines, are they, when you buy, purchase these from the, um, American Heart Associations, do they get registered with the Town of Cornwall? Or anybody can actually, if, if somebody, for some reason, they get lost, they're lost forever, or we can actually track them?
These are certified, they're actually, you know, they're a good question, they actually be administered to Town of Cornwall, or the PD, it'd be a PD or the Town Hall, and the ZOES and, and, uh, life packs, the CR2, all both do that, and so it's connected to your wifi, and then that way you can transmit, like, you know, after a call goes over, the medic wants to, something like that, says, uh, call, if they had an incident, what, what was that call, uh, one o'clock in the morning last week, right up at the hospital? Some woman was driving, her husband picked up her at the train station, and obviously, he took too many drugs, and, uh, you know, had passed out, I know, so she looked at her phone, closest hospital, it's at Cornwall, when it went to Cornwall Hospital, no, you're at Cornwall, so now that, PD got said, PD's doing CPR on him, and so then the ambulance got there, they were doing CPR for several minutes.
Correct, with police, definitely, it's vital to have, when it does, and should be stepped on.
I mean, as far as the Town Hall and Munter, I mean, just like, I guess, from a, from a risk management legal perspective, you could wanna have working AEDs in your.
Well, I don't think that you would be responsible if you didn't have them, but I would think just as a matter of, you know, you have people coming in regularly, if, God forbid, an accident, if somebody had a need for it, it's, it's responsible to have them there.
Yeah, so I think, I think we definitely need to get one for Munter, one for here.
We, we chose Munter in the past when I, I said, you wanna suppose, because seniors, citizen area, but, that was like, that was a big area for exercising, uh, you know, and all kinds of other activities for seniors, and then obviously here, so always be in a public building.
Does, uh, Little League have one up at the?
That's a good question, I was wondering.
I would think that, for the camps, uh, where I work actually, we do have one, and everybody knows where that machine is, because more, often people don't know where AD is, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. Do these have, um, comparable lifespans and warranties?
Yes, they do, they all do, now, eight, eight years, I think both of them are eight years.
Eight years, okay.
So I mean, I, you know, if it's a matter of, it probably just makes sense to get four life packs versus two life packs and two, what would we say, at six hundred bucks?
Well, then you could, roughly about, it's roughly about four hundred dollars, uh, uh, a machine, no, excuse me, three hundred dollars a machine, cause then for the ZOES, you're gonna have to get the, uh, actual. Cause then for the ZOES, you're gonna have to get the, uh, actual. Doesn't show here, you have to get a house, a case that mounts to the wall. And it's hard case, it has a door on it.
Correct.
That's a couple hundred dollars.
Maybe what we ought to do is, I know this quote is what, at this point, the quote expired on whenever it was. We should probably get a new quote.
I got one today.
Oh, perfect.
Oh, you did, okay.
Um, I think it's slightly cheaper, no?
I don't care.
I'm just curious, do we buy quantities or any discount?
Uh, no, boring. They, they are giving us.
So trade-in?
Trade-ins, um.
Yes. The, the suction.
For five fifty in trade-in.
Then five fifty in trade-in.
Three that we have left, just like from Dustin and the BD.
Okay, I just wanted to ask you a question, um, so I'm sure if you, with the patrol cars, there's like an inventory. Would this become part of the regular inventory to, with these new devices to be in the car?
Oh, yeah, I mean, there was a time we had four of them.
Okay.
Um, so the policies are all in place. Um, the officers are direct not to leave them in the car, cause they are temperature sensitive, um.
Both summer.
So, yeah, I mean, the, all the mechanics are in place, you know, like I said, we've had four from, at, at one point. It might come under some grant money at the time, but, um, I think with two would be sufficient. Um, so if one gets used, we at least have one so the replacement pads come.
Well, that's the, the good thing about this, this, uh, CO two. If you say you used it once, you could continue using it for like a, a second time. See, a medic could use it three times, but the, uh, salesman's telling me, moving in the alley twice. The ZOES, you use it, you have to replace the battery, you can't switch that battery up, charge it up.
I'm sure with Narcam and everything else that you have to bring.
I was gonna say, we just started, you know, last year for Narcam, so we were carrying that now too.
Yeah, I mean, it's a little outside what you would traditionally think of law enforcement doing, but it's just the reality that when these things happen, they're waiting.
The police definitely have to have different.
All right, so I guess, I guess the question is, do we, um. You've got, I think you've suggested.
It would be a joint purchase from what I understand. Uh, two from the police budget, two from buildings and grounds. I can't speak for buildings and grounds, although Tom, uh, Gushman said it was no problem. Uh, but, so it'd be forty-five ninety-three about for the police. So we have twenty-one hundred dollars in D fib maintenance in our line for this year that we haven't used. We have eight hundred dollars we haven't used from the Jangar Commerce donation. We surplus the vehicle this year for two thousand, so, yeah, the funds are there.
Sure, okay. So, so I guess the question is, do, we could certainly do it tonight. We could also, I mean, I think I gotta verify with Pam, the other, the other funds.
We'll get looks in this week.
Yeah, no, I mean, I, I definitely think we should do this, so, um, let me get, let me just get a, you know, verification from Pam. But I think, like, without a doubt, we're, like, we're gonna, you know, add a minimum by two next week.
Yeah, Mike, Mike is someone I saw when I met, but the ZOES, because people do have the ZOES and stuff.
Right.
We, we were after, before I retired, I think about a couple of weeks before I retired, myself and my, uh, chief big for, of, uh, to Cornwall Hospital. I thought that's what the PD was, for that cardiac arrest at one o'clock in the morning. Um, then in the afternoon for a gentleman that came in to get something done with his hearing or whatever. But anyway, so I felt funny, and he passed out at the elevator. We get there, we put him on a monitor and he was in, in V tag at about one eighty, which was a very fast rate. So we actually had a cardioversion, so we cardioversion him at a hundred droos. And the next time we had a cardioversion, because the first time didn't work, we had to go a hundred and fifty. So ZOES. It's only, and then the guy was cardiac arrest, and we ended up striking him at three hundred. And we got him back and he, he lived. But anyway, the ZOES starts off at one twenty and then goes to one fifty. And we were cardioverting this guy and it wasn't working on the cardioversion. And I ended up on cardiac arrest. Cardioversion, someone's conscious, they still got, uh, uh, they got a blood pressure and they got a map and, uh, cardiac arrest, you have zero map. No pressure.
Yeah, so, so we're gonna do this next week.
Okay.
I'm gonna have it on the agenda, we'll have.
Chief also has the latest clip, so.
Yeah, we'll get that, I'll, I'll verify with Pam, um, how we're gonna divide it up, put on the agenda for next week and we'll order them. Do you know how long it takes to get them, what you ordered?
Uh, about, two weeks, I said, two, maybe two weeks.
Okay.
I could call up, who do you talk to, chief?
No.
Carl Bryson.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's my captain.
Okay.
Do you know if they are made in the United States or they're imported?
No, they're non-Studards.
Pardon me?
Yes, they're non-Studards. Yeah, well-known.
Oh, Striker?
Yes.
A striker in physical control electronics.
Striker is a big facility in, in France.
So, so next, um, we've got the. We spoke about this at the last meeting, um, where we would change the Clinton Street stop sign to Union Street. So you know right now where you have it on Clinton and we would switch it to, to Union, you know, when you're coming up off Main Street. We would move the stop sign from Clinton to Union. We've had a lot of, you know, a number of residents who have, you know, reached out, you know. You know, about, I guess, the dangerousness of when you're coming up there and you got that telephone pole with the plants and the, the, whatever the, the box set is on there. And they've asked, and I, I spoke to the chief, I spoke to the highway superintendent, they don't see any reason to not switch the stop sign. Um, so basically, in order to do that, we would have to amend, um, the, uh. Basically, we have a local law, um, um, to amend Town Code Chapter one forty-three in total vehicle and traffic. Cause you have to, every time you move stops on, you have to amend the traffic code. So this is, this resolution would basically allow us to move it from Clinton to Union.
Well, it sets a public hearing on the law, which will, but, yeah, right.
Oh, yeah, sorry, yeah, 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 yeah. So, you know, we would, uh. Yeah, so I guess we could do, if the board's okay with that, we could, um. Can I have that on here? Yeah, we could put that on, set the public hearing for, maybe not do it for the reorg meeting. We'll do it for the, you know, the second meeting on the January, whatever meeting date that's gonna be, um. When we get to that, let me see.
The reorg is tentatively on the ninth?
Yeah, so next week we're gonna set the date for the reorg, for January ninth.
So this one is on the sixteenth then?
Yeah, so I would do this for the sixteenth.
Okay.
Um. All right, so, um, holiday lights, I know I've spoken to everyone about this. Um, I know Tim, we spoke about this, Ropsha, um, you know, it, it's, um. You know, we have this, we have roughly twenty-five thousand, six hundred dollars left in the Main Street grant. Um, so for roughly a thousand dollars a pole, um, we would get, uh, service installed on seventeen poles on Main Street. RPC's ready to go, um, with this. This would then get billed to the Main Street grant and then we would also take. Um, but we would still have roughly eight thousand five hundred dollars left. We would, um, we could basically take all of the, all of the money that, that the Main Street Committee this year, as well as some other stuff. And we could put that into the, um, apply that to the Main Street grant. That would bring us to the, uh, it's like a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. We could submit that and then we could get reimbursed by the state for this Main Street grant that goes back to twenty eighteen. So that, that would basically be the plan, if we, you know, move ahead with that, we would, you know, get these lights installed. And then I know the, uh, Cornwall Events Committee, they're planning on working with businesses on Main Street to get them to, you know. Purchase the actual light fixtures that would go on telephone poles, um. And so that, that would be the, you know, that would be the plan.
Um, I'd like to pass this out to each of the board members after our discussion. Um, and I know that, uh, as I brought up in our last meeting, that some of the purchases for, um, even the lights. Were done without the board's authorization and knowledge. Um. For the sake of transparency and due diligence, um. We're talking a thousand dollars for, just to wire the poles, there's nothing else. And if we're talking about climate smart, we're talking about green energy. Um, I just think this is counterproductive to what we should be doing. So what I have done is, um, I went back to our January ninth, twenty twenty-three meeting. And when we met, um, with the supervisor, we discussed the goals that we had. We talked about large planters with trees, we talked about more benches, we talked about more recycling bins. These were all the things that were discussed in the Main Street grant. Unbeknownst to me, I didn't know there was twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, we asked for a, um, an increase of last year to tw- five thousand dollars. Because you had volunteers that were going around in our basements, finding scraps just to make that first winter wonderland, like, look nice. Because we didn't know that money was there. This, last year we asked for five thousand dollars and we were really frugal about it. Every time we went to go buy something or think about purchasing something, we really were trying to be careful because we realized this was taxpayer money. If I had known we had twenty-five thousand dollars, I would work very hard for you and with you to actually make sure that we were using the money that the senator had provided to Cornwall, where we get the most bang for our buck, where people in the town could really see, um, what their tax dollars were getting, what the grant money was. So I propose a number of things and I had walked and I didn't realize that the idea of these lights were actually thought about last January. And I wish I had known about that. But, uh, moving forward, um, one of the things we talked about are these large planters. And again, these are just suggestions. And, um, I do, I do want the, I really want the board to support maybe doing a little bit more research. This is not, this is not being obstruction, being an obstruction, this, this is about doing the right thing. And now that I know that we have this money, I, I really think that we could do much better than putting in seventeen outlets for power.
So what I'm gonna say is that this is.
Let me finish, let me finish and then you can.
Sure.
Okay, so I do have a proposal for, um, ten of these large planters where we could actually put trees in. And that was one of the goals, was to actually put tree planters. And then instead of the Cornwall Garden Club lugging around twenty-seven different planters and putting flowers in them. We could actually, um, as a community group, we could actually help enhance it, add flowers, change it every season and really beautify it. Um, the other thing I'm suggesting, and I saw this in New York City, it was beautiful. They have solar lights, you know what they do? They go up the trees. Why can't we put them up the poles? We're talking seventeen dollars for a double pack of these. We're talking three hundred feet of solar lights and that, that we could do like now. And it's right there. We're not spending seventeen thousand dollars. Um, the other thing that I am proposing is, um, what was the last thing? Um, if you go to the very back page, and I know there might be something in the New York Forward Grant, but banners, they have like holiday banners. And we can do this with Cornwall, they're like sixty-eight dollars a piece. We could put these on the poles and we could have Cornwall and we could have the solar lights. And we could actually make this a very welcoming and beautiful, uh, display on our Main Street. And guess what? It's less than ten thousand dollars. So all this is less than ten thousand dollars. We're not spending all the senators', um, you know, the grant money.
Sure.
Um, have you asked the senator's office? There's a possibility, I know DA and, uh, NYS, have we talked about, Dastney? Have we asked for an extension? Is there a hard and fast rule we have to spend it by?
No, they want, this goes back to twenty eighteen, they have called me twice in December wanting the grant fund closed down.
But we, okay.
Let me just, so, okay, so now I'm gonna get into this, so.
All right, okay, uh, let me finish one last thing and then I will say more. So I also reached out because I said, you know, we've had a lot of obstacles. We've had the county, they're doing the bridge, we couldn't do anything on the Triangle Park. So we couldn't use any of that money to beautify that Triangle Park. Um, so a lot of the things that we've wanted to do on Main Street has been held back by projects we've had no control over. And I've actually reached out to ask for an extension because it makes sense. If we can't move forward, how are we supposed to spend the money wisely and prudently? And I really, and I, I rest my case, seventeen thousand dollars for seventeen outlets is just, I think. When we're talking climate smart communities, I'm using solar energy, I'm, I'm creating, uh, quieting zones on Main Street with the trees and, and other things.
Sure.
People to comfortably sit, um, I think that's much better use of money.
So we have the Cornwall, so we have the New York Forward Project, so we don't really wanna get into planters and banners and all that kinda stuff. Because we also have a marketing and wayfinding initiative that the state will fund. And we're gonna look to have a unified design sense. So if we buy this stuff and they fund, you know, the connector trail and the wayfinding initiative, this is just all going away because it's not gonna be. Because part of the New York Forward Grant is, we're gonna hire a landscape architect, we're gonna hire a marketing and branding firm. So all this stuff is gonna be designed, so if we do this, this quite frankly would be a waste because. Everything has been planned out with the engineers, there's a whole, there's a whole project for this, the Cornwall Connector Trail. Um, you know, solar lights are just not at the point of, you know, where really they can be relied upon, so. And, and so we, there's really, so I, like, I guess what I'm saying is we have the Cornwall Connector Trail, it's a multimillion dollar. All this stuff is envisioned as part of that, between trees and planters, a unified design theme between the town and the village. This has been planned, this is a project. I don't know why we would, why we would deviate from that when we're going to be awarded this in spring.
Do we have the nuts and bolts of all the things that this, this New York, this connector is doing? Or is the town board or the public gonna have any say of what actually goes out there?
One hundred percent. Once this project gets awarded, we're gonna put up.
Again, I throw this out here, this is ten thousand dollars opposed, and are actually things that we, the public can see right away.
Then we're gonna have to, but then we're gonna have to come back and basically get rid of it, cause we're gonna be planned.
Well, how many years is this, I mean, we don't know, how long it's gonna take to actually do all this?
No, the contracts will be awarded in the spring. And then, and then we go out to bid.
So then why would we wire?
What's that?
The, why would we wire?
Because that's part of the plan, that's actually part of the project is, is putting these.
Oh, the connector plan that this, uh, board did and we weren't.
You didn't show up to one meeting, maybe perhaps you should have participated.
I watch it, I watch it online.
So, I mean, I, but, so anyway.
I'm talking about the Main Street beautification, the volunteers.
So as far as the Cornwall Connector Trail is concerned.
Volunteering, setting the parks up.
We envisioned putting, we envisioned putting streetlights from Quaker Plaza down through the village, so.
Well, it's the week.
This is all envisioned as part of the Cornwall Connector Trail, really.
I'm just pointing out to the board that there's options, not just putting up ten, seventeen outlets.
You know, it's a.
Well, we can u- we can use them.
But we don't know what the Cornwall Connector Trail, so the thing is.
Well, we don't know any, well.
We're gonna be hiring a design firm to decide where the planter boxes go, where the trees go. So if we just go and put this, then when we go to contract and we, you know, RFP the design firm. Then basically we've like, we've jumpstarted the whole process without going through this like unified plan that we have. So, so I, you know, like, I guess, I just don't.
I, I, I.
What would be the purpose in doing this?
The purpose is having things out there for the public to see now, not waiting one to two years from now. That's what I'm saying.
I also think that.
And people can commit, can enjoy them.
I also think that the, the, the planters are a good idea, but not for, uh, very narrow, small sidewalks. Because they're becoming obstacles.
I agree with you, they've actually been strategically placed.
The outlets that they're going to be assembled on a utility poles are gonna be away from the reach of anybody.
This is part of a plan that the mayor plans to do it in the village, the plaza.
The mayor, wow.
The mayor would do it in the village up to the town line, we would take it up and go up to the plaza. It would be a unified, you know, sense of having the lights on all the poles from Quaker Plaza down through the village, just like they have on Woodbury. Like they have in many other communities.
Again.
That, that's what this would do.
Let me finish what I was trying to say. The lights are gonna be on the utility poles and taking space in the air, not on the ground. These, these pots, giant cement pots are good for New York City and not for, uh, Cornwall. They're just, they're gonna become very giant and, uh, take space. Um.
Okay.
What I'm saying is.
Tim, thoughts on this?
Uh, no, no, I'd like to reconsider a little bit more. I, I kind of hear what, uh, you know, the council was most of saying is that. They do have a specific place if it gets.
Yeah, we had walked the property earlier when we were on the Main Street beautification. Many we actually had walked and, and identified spots that were wide enough.
Right now on Bridge where I actually live, I walk every day through that. There are three different set of table and chairs, they're each different colors, pink and blue and green. To me, I mean, this is personal taste, they don't, uh, bring any, they, they look tacky and very light weight. And the wind could just blow them away. So I prefer to, uh, as a president, as the, um, representative of the, um, residents here. I like to invest the money on something that it's gonna last for ten, twenty years. Not something that it's gonna be seasonal and done just for, just cosmetic, it has to be done carefully.
I, I would, I would ask to.
I, I agree with you, uh, Councilman Michael Reisley, is that, um, due to the limitations we were given in the budget. That's what the chairs of the committee decided with the chairs, uh, and the tables. So I want you to understand that they made those decisions based on economics, what money was actually in the budget for them to spend. So I want you to understand that they made those decisions based on economics, what money was actually in the budget for them to spend. So that's why they selected what they did.
So I, I would say.
Were more expensive ones that were thousands of dollars, but we didn't have the thousands of dollars in our budget.
Part of the reason why we did the New York Forward Grant is because we didn't just wanna in an ad hoc way pick out things, we wanted like a unified design sense. From the town through the village to have a sense of place. Those were the projects that we submitted. So when the Cornwall Connector Trail is awarded in the spring, we will be RFPing out, hiring a local design firm, working with the engineer. Everything, and you can talk to Sean about this. We've laid out where you can put street trees, where you can put these things. It all has to be engineered in order to be ADA compliant, to do all this. This has to be done in a methodical way. You can't just like take this and go and do this. This is why this is better designed to use the New York Forward Funds and go through a landscape engineer, uh architect. Go through the engineering, put out a proper plan, have the public decide this, you know.
But the public's not really deciding this. You had, you had a group of people, that small group of people who decided this. And what I'm just.
Local planning committee with plenty of people that participated and we had surveys and we had public comment. And people, people have said they would like these streetlights. I've spoken to the public, I've seen. Tim, you said the same thing to me, people want the streetlights.
A lot of people, a lot of people on Main Street do want.
People want the streetlights, so.
And, oh, we also have a streetlight, we're actually putting up streetlights, so you have streetlights and more street, more lights.
Wonder what the decorative lights.
Right.
So I mean, I think we should.
Cause we could talk about.
Right, the LED light project we're doing as well. So we're, we're doing, putting a lot of lights up.
And this would actually be LED holiday lights too. We'd be buying LED lights.
Well, next year, right?
Yes, next year, absolutely, we'd be buying them next year, but we wanna, we, we wanna.
I just.
Ray's ready to go, he's got the numbers with Central Hudson, he can.
I don't support it.
The other thing I, by the way, I wanna just ask, I may reach out to Ray myself and ask uh from the RPC Electric. Is that when he assembles these um uh units on the uh utility poles. Um is there a warranty, guarantee, some type of, if some, something goes wrong, is he gonna come back, fix them? Free of charge or he's gonna charge again? I mean, things go, I mean, it could go wrong, so. Does he have a warranty like for one year if anything happens, he will come back and?
Whatever the standard he provides when he does any work for the municipality.
Alright.
So I mean, Tim, it's um, you know, I guess you're, do we wanna wait? Do we, I mean, Ray's ready to go, like he wants to go now.
No, no, I can ask, I can ask that myself. I'm just saying that I would, I would have. It's fine with me.
You know, I mean, if you.
When is um, or, where, when is um the contractor coming in to actually put in the streetlights?
Work started.
And, right, and it's, that's supposed to save us money in our utility bills?
Yes, work is started.
And then we're gonna add?
Work is started.
And burn more utility, okay. I'm just trying to understand that one.
Work is started. Yeah, I mean, we, we can see when we come to it.
Money and then we're gonna spend it.
We can see when we come to it, okay, so. Alright, so next up, so next up we have the revised liquor authority notice Jenny's Sports Bar and Grill Incorporated. So they, so you know Jenny's Sports Bar, they are going from, they used to be a bar. They used to go to a, a bar slash tavern, that's, that's the legal name of it, um Jenny's Sports Bar and Grill Incorporated. They're going from a bar and tavern to a restaurant, it's a change in, in type of establishment. So whenever you do this, you have to, they have to provide a thirty day advance notice to the local municipality, which they're doing. Um and so they're asking that we basically waive the thirty day notice. And, you know, they already have a liquor license, just, this just allows them to submit this application without having to. You know, without I guess us having like a hearing or discussing this any further. I don't think we've ever.
Opportunity to object.
Yeah, we, we've never done that, I don't think.
Never been a bar that warranted objection to it, from what I'm aware of.
So I, I would ask in the special meeting that we um, you know, we grant them the waiver.
Okay.
To this. Um, alright, next up we have the twenty twenty-three Bridge New York Grant Program. So this is, um as you may recall, we applied to this last year for the Jackson Avenue and Taylor Road culverts. We were not awarded, um we're gonna get another bite at the apple again of this. And so I know that Tommy and Sean are gonna have a list of, I think there's potentially one bridge and four culverts. I definitely know Jackson Avenue and Taylor are gonna be on there again. Tommy and Sean will have that list for us. But we would wanna reply for this deadline. For the culverts are January nineteenth. And deadline for the bridge would be January twenty-sixth. So as soon as they have this, you know, the list, I'll, I'll get it out to you. But this, this just came out. Um while I have you, just real quick, and I, I apologize for not giving this to you, but this is a, an additional grant opportunity that. You know, somehow both Sean and I missed. I was at the Orange County Transportation Planning Committee today out of Goshen. I'm, I'm the going member for the Newburgh area, urbanized area, uh me and the town of Newburgh supervisor are on it. And so we were basically, um this is where like a lot of like the federal and state transportation um dollars, you know, get decided and get spoken about. And so this is something that, that came out. This is actually from the, the um. Uh federal infrastructure law that passed, this money made its way down from the federal government to the state. This is a grant program. This is due, does everyone have a copy? So basically this came out September twenty-ninth, it's due um January ninth. I asked Sean, is there anything in here that would maybe make sense for the town of Cornwall? You know, one of the things we could potentially do would be pedestrian facility improvements. To like the Cornwall Connector Trail. So if there's any funding gaps that we would have in that New York Forward Project, we could potentially apply for that. I've had residents asked about a pedestrian trail from the Nature Center down Angola to the traffic circle.
So that, that would be item four, planning, designing, construction.
No, that would be the uh transportation alternative uh program. Sean, Sean thinks that would be a good project, or if we can get the state on board. The idea of doing a pedestrian crossing from Continental over nine W to the Nature Museum, to basically connect. Um you'd have to get the state on board with that, but anyway, but this is what this is designed to do, is to fund these types of projects.
Has the county?
Tough one.
Yeah, well, I'm just, it's, so.
Is the county doing anything with this? Because I look at the carbon reduction, are they, are they looking to do anything with their buses?
So they've got their own set of projects that they're looking at. But, but as municipalities, we're eligible to apply on our own for, for projects, so. Sean and I are gonna attend a workshop and just basically see if the Angola project. Or the Cornwall Connector Trail project, which are basically, you know, increasing pedestrian access to see if we can get that funded. You know, get a half a million, get a million for that. We're just, you know, you know, we're gonna have a discussion um to see if that's something worth applying for, but there's a lot of money at stake here. And if we can put together a competitive, you know, competitive application, there might be something worth pursuit, so.
Yeah, wouldn't it be, it'd be nice to involve the county too because Angola's a county road.
They would have to, yes, so they would.
Sully, Quaker.
They would have to, they would have to sign off on it, but because it would be in the, the town's, the town's right of way.
Okay.
So Eric Tenega has already been reached out to, he's also on the board of the Hudson Highlands Nature Museum. So because of the idea, you know, like you would wanna have as many partners as possible in these things, that actually gives you points for having partnerships. So if you're connecting a nature museum to a pedestrian trail, you might get additional points, that goes, you know, a long way, so anyway. So I've reached out to Eric on this. You know, reached out to the nature museum, Sean's gonna take a look and if we can come up with a, you know, project that we think is, you know, viable, then. I'll bring it back to the board. But, um. Alright, so then we have the four. We have this letter from Senator Scoofus, um which I don't know if you've had a chance to read. So basically, um as you know, the town opted into the forty-five B property tax abatement program. I, I don't know what year we did that, you know, presumably what decades ago when this.
At least twenty.
Yeah, came about. And so, yeah, and so I spoke to the assessor. Currently, we've got two projects, um one's gonna be coming off. Um but, you know, it doesn't really have a lot of impact on the town of Cornwall right now as far as like any loss of like. Tax, you know, like property taxes, you know. Cause the way it works is like, let's say you, you basically, um you do um work and then you get an abatement. You know, on the assessed value of your property over a ten year period and it basically.
Commercial.
Yeah, yeah, sorry, commercial. And so over time, let's say you had, you know, you get like a two hundred thousand dollar reduction in your assessed value. Over ten years, that two hundred thousand gradually, you know, gets back to what it was. In fact, Woody's used to have one, so I know when Deke bought that building and he did the work, he actually had this and, and that expired by, over the last five years. So, you know, we do have these occasionally, but what the senator is basically saying, and I know he sent this to every municipality in Orange County, is that basically. He's got this like, this um law that he's introduced that would uh require, I think it's um local labor and maybe prevailing wage at the state level. That's not passed yet. What he's basically saying here is that municipalities should really look at, you know. Getting rid of this as a benefit that they currently offer to businesses, that's what he's saying. So, you know, so that, basically he's saying if you get rid of this, you would have a huge tax savings to, you know. To residents by not offering this, you know, economic development program of the town of Cornwall. Or in Goshen or wherever.
This is like the graduating one, right? Like you start off and then graduate.
It's like five, it goes, it goes up five percent. I mean, it's basically like a pilot.
Yeah.
It's basically like, this is as a right, so you come in and you do this and you fill out this application and give it to the assessor, you get it. There's no questions asked. Like you don't have to go to the IDA, you don't have to. This has been in place for decades here in Cornwall, so it's, it's, it's not like, this isn't something we're doing, he's just, you know, so I'm just bringing this to your attention.
Senator is asking us to consider.
Well, getting rid of it, yeah, getting rid of it, that's what he's asking.
You have to amend your code, but you understand, just cause you have it, doesn't mean it applies to the school district.
Right, that's what I'm saying, right, exactly, so.
If you repeal it, the percentage that would go to town taxes as far as this value.
Right.
I don't know if that's much of an incentive or disincentive for anybody to do anything in Cornwall, but if you're interested, that's, that's what I'm gonna do.
Yeah, I mean, I, I know New Windsor, I was, I was watching their meeting earlier in the month and they were, they said they were gonna look into this. Um, you know, to see, but, I mean, as of right now, we're not, there's two projects before the town and it's, you know, the assessor said it doesn't really have a much meaningful impact on us. So, but just wanted to bring it to your attention. Um, okay, so, alright, the Verizon franchise agreement. I thought I gave you a copy of that, I guess, um the old one, um it expires in September twenty-four.
Okay.
The Verizon franchise agreement. And so this is the time when if you wanna put in things like, you know, those zombie. Uh wires that we have on Main Street and throughout the town. This is where we could basically tell them that we want them to remove the zombie wires. Um, you know, I don't know how that's gonna go as far as negotiating it, but I know, I, I believe the village, they just did one, I think they just did theirs and I wanna say they got in theirs, this provision.
I'll be surprised if they're not amenable to it.
You know?
You know, it's something they really should be doing.
Should be doing, yeah, it's a hazard, yep.
So, you know, there's, uh, there's a whole process where you have to, you have to send them a letter in writing and you gotta get a copy of the new proposed agreement. There's a whole process we gotta go through.
Right, what will happen is uh if you wanna start now, cause they're gonna wait until September, I'll be very surprised if they approach you before then. Um and they'll come in with a, a draft contract very much similar to the old contract. Sometimes they want more years on it or something like that. And then you get it and you have an opportunity to say, well, we want cable to this public building or, you know, whatever other terms you want. There isn't a lot of room for you to negotiate things, but there are some things that you can, I would think that the zombie wires would be one of those. And then we'll come back and say, here's our red line, this is the revision that we want, and they'll take a look at it and then, then if they're satisfied, we'll hold a public hearing. And um the public will have an opportunity to say, we like this, we don't like that, whatever it may be, make suggestions, close the public hearing and adopt a resolution approving it. Then goes to the PSC, PSC has to approve the contract. It doesn't take as long as it will, you know, could for the, the, the switch of that, the street light's out, but it's gonna be a couple of months. But then once they approve it, it's in place for, usually goes like ten years or thereabouts.
Yeah, we also have, uh, we currently have a zombie pole law on the books that goes back to twenty eighteen. I, I don't know if last time we've actually done anything, you know, and have used that, but.
I don't know if we have a problem so much with zombie poles, that's always, it's last man out has to dig down the pole, whether it's a wire on it was.
So we do have it in the event that that happens, but um that is on the books. I, I just, you know, I mean, part of what prompted this, you remember how there was a, a, that whole lead covered, you know, lines?
That's the law on that.
So.
Yeah.
When Verizon, um, you know, the governor had asked for a submission of all of, like an inventory of like by municipality of all the lead covered lines in New York State. And so they, they sent a worksheet out, I guess they uploaded it by, like at the bottom there was a tab and it said like, you know, towns, villages, whatever. And so when you go and you click on it, they gave us like this, it's redacted, and then they sent a letter. And they basically said, you know, due to security and competitive advantage and this and that, we're not gonna provide it to you, and the state basically agreed with them. And so basically, yeah, so the state essentially, you know, um, and I know. At, at, at the state level, there's a push to, you know, do away with some of that. And I don't know how far they can, obviously there's probably is a security risk, you don't wanna, you know, let, you know, foreign adversaries know where certain things are. But certainly, I think you could let people know where abandoned zombie wires are. I don't think that is, you know. Yeah, but anyway, I thought it was funny. So there's like a thousand pages of this, if you go to the PSC website of like redacted. Alright, so next up we have the Dela Vedova Trust. So, um, there's an additional amount of money that they have for us. And we still have the original fifty thousand dollars. Um, we did decide back earlier in the year that we were going to use. The majority of it to replace the bridge that goes to the gazebo on the Grins Pond. We decided that that was a, that was a repair or maintenance of an existing, but. And I know the attorney for the trust, she, you know, she wants an accounting of it. Um unfortunately, the, the engineer is designing the bridge, it's a public project, and so that's like number, you know. So Sean said by January first, he would have the designs for the bridge. So unfortunately, we're not really gonna have much to claim against the Dela Vedova Trust this year. But I mean, the bridge is gonna be like, cause it's a public, it's a bridge, it's gonna be like twenty-five, thirty thousand, yeah, it's gonna be.
It's going.
Yeah, so anyway, so, so we haven't really spent any of it, but the intention is to use it on the bridge, it has to be replaced because it's like a danger, it's, you know. So that's.
So this is still open because we have no accounting?
No. No, it's still open because we haven't been able to, I mean, we could probably bill some engineering to it, we could probably bill a couple minor things to it. But it's open because we haven't completed the bridge project.
Sure.
So, but, you know, there's no, there's no real timeframe, I mean, it di- it didn't say that you had to spend the money in a year.
No.
So basically, it's not that we have no accounting, it's just that we don't have any expenses to apply to because we haven't done the bridge project.
Any, any thoughts on that?
Yeah, well, what's happened is you have fifty thousand dollars in hand. And in order to draw the money, they're gonna wanna know what you're spending it on and what amounts, which is fine. Um in addition, they're winding up the trust, they're, they're getting rid of, they're creating all the assets and you're getting an additional one thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Yeah, it's not, it's not much, yeah.
So as soon as we review their accounting, you, in terms of that being the amount that's appropriate, Josh could sign off on that. You'll get your additional one thousand dollars, but eventually you're gonna turn around and say, this is what we're gonna draw against the fifty thousand dollars for. And, you know, you'll have to account, if you will, for that.
I do have a question. Um I know this um covers the um instruction of, or building or designing the bridge.
Yeah.
What about the landscape with the trees that are around it? Because one of them is pretty lifeless and the other one is still.
So whatever.
Money toward it?
Yeah, I mean, just like we could use some of the money for the uh barley extract, you know, we ju- we just have to.
Well, we use some of it for the landscape or for the blue tree and for the iron.
Yeah, we have, replacing the tree, yes.
I totally agree with that, you know.
We absolutely could. So I, I just, before we go in a, a, you know, I wanna see what Sean's gonna estimate the, you know. Cause then we're gonna have to do a public, you know, project, cause it's gonna be more than thirty thousand dollars to the bridge.
Could the, the bridge, we were there recently for the um Hanukkah celebration, I noticed the bridge is very dark. Are there gonna be lights, like solar light or something that kinda lets the pathway or not really?
Whatever we're, I mean, right now it's, you know, whatever, whatever we're allowed to do that will, uh that will turn on when there's no sun and stuff is, you know.
I mean, does, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, when it comes to public facilities, you try to move away from solar because you wanna have reliability. Um.
I'm sure you've gone on to um Walk on Hudson um Bridge.
Yeah.
They do have, I know that's a very commercial giant uh old rail um trail that has turned to a pedestrian walking. But they do have these um solid um stainless steel solar lights on the both sides when you.
Where is it? Hudson Bridge?
Yep.
Walkway.
Walkway Hudson.
Yeah, but that's open for a return.
Pardon me?
That's, that's, cause it's open for the night, man, for net walking.
Yeah, I, I mean, saying that, I'm just saying that there, there is a commercial quality, um, solar lights. They could still, I mean, it's beautiful when you, uh, drive by if there are lights, just to lit the gazebo. I mean, I'm.
Just so you know, in the code, there are, there's code, um, for outdoor lights. They have to forget down.
These, these are the size of this racket.
I understand that.
They're not big.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I think, first and foremost, we gotta pay for the cost of the bridge and then whatever's left over, we can, you know.
Anyway, it's, it's a work session, so just exchanging ideas, thoughts.
Absolutely, I agree with you.
Okay, so next up, we have boys' basketball staff salaries, twenty three, twenty four. So, um, we are, Laura, um, see, uh, these would be the salaries for this year. So referees would go seventeen, the scorekeeper, bookkeeper would go to sixteen an hour. Mike Anderson, who basically runs the, the score keep, book, score clock table referee, he would go to eighteen dollars an hour. You know, this is, this is like the town's basketball.
No, no.
This is the town's basketball.
We read it. I'm just asking, why is this redact, like, it looks like it's been redacted. It's all blacked out. Oh, you have the copy of what was said? Okay. No, I was gonna say it's, ours is, all's all, ours are blank and redacted.
The town was on the website?
It's on the website too.
Oh, you know why? Because it's, uh, this has, you have another one for executive session that has stuff that we're gonna talk about in executive session.
I understand, okay, thanks for clarifying.
Make public.
Okay, thank you.
We were vote, voting on this, right?
Yes. Alright, so, so next up, we have the youth committee. So, just, just real quick on this. The, some, uh, the members of the current youth committee, they have basically come to Rocha and I and they would like to basically go off and essentially become like the Fourth of July committee or become like their own e- entity that's separate from the town. And so, I ju- I guess I just bring this up now because, you know, we have this formal established town committee. And if they do that, we would not be reappointing them at the reorg, but then we would have a vacant youth committee. So, the question becomes, you know, do we dissolve it? Do we keep it open? You know, we already have it and we hadn't had it for a number of years. You know, we can certainly, you know, think on it, but basically, essentially, they wanna go, they wanna have like less, I guess, like, you know, look, you have to deal with a government entity, you have, like, you can't move as freely, you have, you have more difficult time fundraising. They're, you know, like, they wanna be able to fundraise more, that's why they wanna become a nonprofit. And so that, that's why they wanna go that route. If they go that route, they would have to come back to the town whenever they wanna get approval for events that they're gonna do on town property, but they would be able to operate more freely. So obviously, they're free to do that, if they don't wanna be reappointed to this committee. We then have to decide what we wanna do with the youth committee. And so, I think that's, that's what we have to, you know, so I guess for Steve, you know, is there a way? You know, cause we're certainly not gonna find six appointees to a youth committee, you know, and we're also not gonna wanna have a duplication of, if you've got the Cornwall Youth Committee that becomes a nonprofit, are we then gonna wanna have a town youth committee doing the same things, you know? That seems kind of like at cross purposes. So, you know, but on the other hand, if they're ever not functioning, we would wanna have the ability to put people on the youth committee.
Well, I could suggest, if, if these people wanna go and do this, which, I, by the way, might be a very good thing.
Yeah.
Keep the committee, but leave it unpopulated for now, see how it works out. And if they go out and they decide that they don't care for what they're doing or if you don't care for what they're doing, then you find, you know, put out a, a notice that we're gonna be appointing people to the youth committee. And, you know, they can go their own way, God bless them, and you appoint your own and you decide what the town youth committee's gonna do. If, on the other hand, they turn out great and you don't need a town youth committee as such, you can just adopt a resolution dissolving it down the road. But there's no legal requirement to appoint people to a committee if there are vacancies. You can leave it vacant.
So, it sounds like they, which is fine, cause they, they, they do some very interesting and fun things. So, you know, we've had people from the committee, actually, they just resigned and, cause they were busy with things. But should we have, like, which, I support if they wanna go do other things. But should they be affiliated with the town?
Well, they're not gonna be anymore.
They're, so, that's where we're break, we're breaking that, right?
So they, they would, so, the way the youth committee works is they have to be reappointed every reorg, so we're just not gonna reappoint anyone to these positions.
Just leave it open and see what happens?
Yeah, I mean, look, they're still gonna do the same stuff. They just wanna, and I somewhat agree with them. I mean, they would have better freedom to do fundraising and to do other things and to, you know, I mean, it's like a similar thing, right? I mean, we asked Phyllis if she wanted to become a committee of the town, and they said, heck no, we wanna be, you know, remain independent. You know, cause you have certain benefits when you're not affiliated with the municipal. You don't have as much like, you know, paper to push and all kinds of stuff that you have to deal with. You could get things done more efficiently. So I, I, I mean, I kind of understand from that perspective as to why you wouldn't wanna.
Well, the fundraising is the biggest.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's the big thing, truly, the fundraising, yeah.
I think the, um, uh, their goal has been to provide the youth with more activities and events. And they have demonstrated a great practice in the past year. And, um, they do just wanna have a little bit more room to wiggle and have more events, like seasonal events, without being, um, tied to the town in terms of money.
Well, in terms of money, yeah, you're right, but they will be tied to the town in terms of if they wanna do something on town property.
For the permissions, yes. That, that definitely they would know.
Yeah, they, they would have to provide their own insurance.
Yeah, they're gonna get their insurance.
That they would have to do. So, but they know that, and that that's what they wanna.
I'm thinking if we do, we, we're gonna meet with them, by the way. Uh, we're gonna have a meeting with them to make sure, to just understand what their goals are, uh, clearly. And also, um, just pan out, what I was gonna say, just flew away from me. I was gonna say something. Oh, not to overlap, that was the word I was using. If we create, um, town creates another youth committee, then it's gonna kinda like, um, we have to constantly be asking them, are you guys doing this? So we don't overlap with them. You know, if we keep town youth committee. So I don't think we wanna go that route.
So we have a model that's worked for twenty five years. This is how the River Fest Committee works. We are an independent corporation. We, we work with the village, but we don't work for the village.
I see, okay. Councilwoman Michael Ozzy, how would this impact, um, the great project with the, um, youth garden club in terms of the composting? Are they still gonna be affiliated with the town or the village?
They're under the, the direct, it would just be a rec department.
They're gonna be under the rec department?
Yes, the youth committee, yes. They were under their umbrella, basically. Uh, otherwise, there was not much, uh, what's the word? Direct collaboration between the two clubs, cause they run different things.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that'll just be under the rec department and there's still, I mean, yeah, and so honestly, what'll happen now is, you know, Rocha and Phyllis and the rec department, I mean, they'll just, you know, program more stuff. I mean, I know Phyllis said she was excited to, you know, get involved in more youth, uh, youth activities, so.
I think the goal, the ultimate goal for everybody is to bring more, um, programs and the youth committee, uh, current youth committee is, we'd like to just expand that, and I think it's a great, uh, news and will support it.
Okay. So next up, we have personnel appointment, uh, police officer full time. So I have a memo here from Chief Geppert. He's requesting that we appoint, uh, Dylan, uh, Dylan Mannion to the position of full time police officer at the annual rate of seventy five thousand one hundred and sixty seven dollars. Step four, he's a five, a lifelong Cornwall resident, US Army veteran, five years experience working for the city of New York. Um, anything you wanna say about this, Chief?
Background is excellent, seems like a great candidate.
Which is filling the position.
Yes, open position. Um, once our, a lot of officer comes.
Full time position?
Yes.
Yes.
Did, did he start already?
No.
No, it's.
No, it's for the fifteen, for the fifteen.
It says starting twelve fifteen twenty three.
Yeah, so he wants us to appoint him, he wants us to appoint him with an M, so he can start, and he can start, you know.
So, wait, there's a whole physical background check, all those things.
I've had to coordinate that with the county or else I couldn't afford it.
That's fine, okay, I just, just asking.
And he resides here in Cornwall?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, no, I mean, the past month, this has all been going on.
How many steps have I done in the PD?
I believe six now.
Six steps.
So, curious, what makes him qualified to be step four?
Uh, it's based on experience. So as opposed to, I mean, I think he has a total of five years' experience.
So five years?
Um, I didn't budget for a five year step, so.
Would you, but, what did you budget for?
Step four. I knew we'd have to be competitive, um, in order to get qual, certified candidates.
Okay.
Yeah, so, that's just the market. Unless you, you know, you start someone at the academy rate, you don't know if they're gonna pass the academy, you don't have them.
No, understood.
Eight, ten months, if they even complete it.
Alright, um, alright, moving on, public comments. Yes?
Um, I'm commenting on item, uh, ten, the discussion that was related to item ten. First, um, I, I think that the tables and chairs on Bridge Street are actually quite nice. I think they're colorful and they're, you know, they, they give, uh, you know, Cornwall flavor to Main Street. Um, York Forward Funding wants to see the kind of coordinated design and intermediate planning that the supervisor described. Um, I do hope that the design will have Cornwall flavor and will not result in any street USA bland, um, so I think that's really important. I, uh, while trees are of course very important, in planters, they don't have the same impact as they do, um, in the ground. So with the variety of funding that was being discussed, I would instead recommend, uh, bump outs at specific parts where the trees could be planted. Going back to, I don't know, a hundred years ago, when they used to have many trees on Main Street. And that, I would recommend that instead. And it's great to hear Councilwoman Scott mention the addition of more recycling bins and hopefully they will be installed.
I think we still had one out there that we had ordered.
There was one out there.
So, I, I, I'm kinda holding on to that till the county finishes their.
Smart.
I don't, I don't know if it's been ordered in here yet, but yes, we did.
Yes?
Um, Nancy Bryan, Cornwall. Um, I'm gonna give you my opinion of something. And so I, I wanna emphasize that this is my opinion. The, the town has a traffic consultant that I would guess works for the town since he is touted as being the town traffic consultant. I have great concern, and again, it's my opinion, that this traffic consultant seems to lean more towards favor of the developers and what the developers need than considering the residents of this town. And I have a great concern with what just hit the town website with the treetop development and the traffic study. Because when the traffic study was mentioned by the traffic consultant at the last planning board meeting, he mentioned needing to get more property from the Quaker ramps and Angola Road. Never did he mention the total destruction of Quaker Avenue, revamping Quaker Avenue, putting lights in at two different spots on Quaker Avenue. Never mentioned Academy Avenue. And so if indeed he is working for the town, it would be nice if the residents were considered. Because it seems like every project that the traffic consultant is giving his opinion on seems to lean towards the developers. And this town board needs to be very aware and go over that treetop stuff with a fine tooth comb. Because what they are presenting will totally destroy this town. And you're, Supervisor Wojcicki, you're talking about walking trail down Angola. Well, that won't be possible if tractor trailers are, first of all, taking property. Where are you gonna put a walking trail? It will be physically impossible, physically impossible. This traffic consultant might be the nicest man on the face of the earth. He is not working for the residents of this town, and I have a huge concern about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes?
Uh, Ted Warren, Cornwall. I just wanted to add, in terms of the, um, discussion about Main Street and trees. So, uh, and to elaborate on what Carla said, if, if you, if you want the true benefits of street trees, which, you know, when they get mature is shade, um, reduction of particulate pollution, uh, production of oxygen, reduction of temperatures, you really do need to put them in the ground. Planters, trees in them are nice, they're, they're more, it's more of a, I would say, it's more decorative. If you're looking for the actual benefits that tree, street trees bring to, uh, a main commercial corridor, it's, uh, it's more desirable to have them in the ground. In places where, you know, understanding that we've got wires on one side of the street and you would need to plant something that wouldn't get over twenty five, thirty feet.
For sure.
There's specific species that'll do that. And then on the other side of the street, we can go as, as high as we want, um, with the understanding that there'll be maintenance issues and things like that. So, I just wanted to add that.
And, and Ted, I agree with you, but some of the constraints that we were presented is about cutting into sidewalks and cutting down underneath. And that's why we moved away from actually putting the t- trees in the ground. I agree, it would be a great idea to do that, but there's running things under that ground.
So there are, you know, um, examples in places, you know, we, um,
Sure.
If you look at a city like Boston or Philadelphia, where they have, there, there are ADA compliance issues with the width of the sidewalk, there, they, there's examples where they still manage to get street trees in, you know, you, you have to be very strategic about where they go. And you have to make sure that you're not violating any regulations. So, it's, um, it's a, it's a bit of a game to, to figure, figure that out, but,
Definitely.
I, I think would be, um, you know, hopefully if the, the New York Forward, uh, money comes fo, comes through, then there could be, you know, a real planning process around it.
Yeah, I mean, I know for a limited area, like, part of, through the Cornwall Connector, Sean actually, Sean looked at it and he walked me, basically from the circle back to Riverlight Park. And we plotted where we could possibly put trees. Like, there's, like, there's only so many locations you can put trees based on these. And then, you know, other things, and it's plotted out. It's obviously not final and there's, there's lots of considerations that have to be. But you can't just do it. You really have to like think it through, and you need experts to help guide it. So it's really not something you can just do. You know, especially on a, so that, that's, that's, you know, my hope is that when he's gonna award it in the spring of twenty twenty four, I mean, that's the one that we think that we're most likely to get, because it's like a joint between the town and village. You know, starting at the plaza, going down through the village, um, it would, you know, and I guess to your point, as far as like, you know, the reason why you hire a wayfinding and branding firm is that you go through a process and you look at the historical nature of Cornwall and you get public opinion and you work on the branding and you come up with the logos and the designs and what you wanted to look at. You put it out there, you almost have a competition, et cetera, and, and that, that's kinda how you end up with, you know, what, you know, what the designs look. But, um, is there anybody else on public con, yes?
Um, my con, Jody Stein, it has to do with what I usually come down. All this is really nice. I can, um, if we would like to see this video, that's water going in between our two buildings, and you can see debris going. So if we put anything on Main Street and we don't have the water problem fixed, it's gonna get washed away. This past weekend, you see that? It's like a river.
This is from this weekend?
That's from July nine.
Oh, July nine.
And that's, it looks like a river.
Are you on Main Street?
Yep.
Oh, okay.
Right, right, us too, we're right there.
Right next to the sand tree and park.
So, um, so, we can't do anything on Main Street till we fix the water problem. And then, this weekend, when it started to rain again, like every time it rains.
Sure.
If I look really tired, that's why, cause I'm not sleeping, because, you know, it's a lot. So I know that you said December.
The engineer, the engineer, I spoke to him, I said, Sean, I'm like, this is amongst the simplest things that the engineering firm designs, is like, what's the diameter and the angle that the pipe has to go? And I was like, I need it. I'm like, you have to give it to me this month. Um, because, you know, it's just, it's just, it's like low-hanging fruit. We should be able to get this done. This isn't like a bridge project. This isn't like Hasbro drainage project.
So what does the county, um, where's the county?
Well, let me just stay on my con.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Because the furniture, whether we agree with it or not, that water that I showed you, the furniture's gone. That furniture's gone.
Yeah.
Well, that's up.
You know what I mean? So, so maybe it'll be next meeting. I did last time Quinn, well, I wasn't at the last meeting, but Quinn was sitting there two meetings ago.
Yep, yep.
I did email and whatever. I'll continue to do that, 'cause if we said December, they got one more meeting. Uh, uh, thank you.
You should show them. You should see this.
I, I can, I can, uh, but you want me to email you guys again, or this?
It's really soft, I see.
Yeah.
I mean, I, it's, it's a rushing river in between our buildings.
I, no, I know the county needs to, but we have, what I'll say is that the town has, the town can control the town.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we can, I mean, I can't tell you how many times a week, you know, Tommy talks to Eric Danega, who ultimately, if he wants to, and they can get this moved up, is gonna get it done. I mean, uh, Tommy and Sean and I, and I think I told you about this, we have a meeting set for, for next, uh, what is it? The twenty-first, I believe we have, with Eric and his team to go over, to go over a bunch of stuff. This is on the list. It's actually like, we have a ten-point list. Yours is on the list as to like, when are you gonna put in the catch basins of the drainage on Main Street? But it, it, it's, you know, we cannot make them, we can, you know, be annoying. We can, you know, um, and, you know, you as residents can just keep, you know, coming at them and emailing them and, and ultimately it'll get done. But the only thing we can control in the town is doing our part of this and keep the pressure up and keep annoying the county.
Right, but I agree with you, but as you watch that water flow, it's coming downward, and it's still gonna hit their homes. And that's where, uh, why I keep emphasizing the county. The county has this, because it's still gonna hit their house.
Oh, yeah, but both need to happen.
And going back and.
Oh, both need to happen.
Both need to happen.
Right. They both need to happen.
So we, you know, so look, so there's no reason why we can't move forward on ours, and then the county eventually does theirs.
That's the big amount of water. You wouldn't have the water.
So, um, okay, so, all right, next up here, um, uh, moving into the special meeting, we have the bond resolution. Um, so if I could get a motion to waive the reading of the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Mcarty?
Yes.
Ms. Mike Barazzi?
Yes.
Mr. Wojcicki?
Yes. Now therefore, it is hereby determined that it is in the public interest to increase and improve the facilities of the district as here above described, that the estimated maximum cost of ten million dollars. And it is hereby ordered that the facilities of the district shall be increased and improved, and that the engineer heretofore retained by the town board shall prepare plans and specifications and make a careful estimate of the expense for said increase and improvement of such facilities. And with the assistance of the town attorney, shall prepare a proposed contract for such increase and improvement of facilities of the district, which plans and specifications, estimated and proposed contracts shall be presented to the town board as soon as possible. And it is hereby further ordered that the expense of the said increase and improvement of the facility shall be financed by the issuance of ten million in bonds of the town. And the cost of said increase and improvement of facilities, including payment of principal and interest on said bonds, shall be paid by the assessment, levy, and collection of sewer charges and taxes on the benefited real properties in the district on an add valorum basis in the same manner and at the same time as the other town charges to pay the principal of and interest on the said bonds, as the same shall become due and payable. And it is hereby further ordered that the town clerk of, of accord or cause to be recorded a certified copy of this resolution in order after a public hearing in the office of the clerk of Orange County within ten days after adoption thereof dated December twelfth, twenty twenty-three. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Mcarty?
Yes.
Ms. Mike Barazzi?
Yes.
Mr. Wojcicki?
Yes. Okay, so next up, let's see what I have, um. We have the, uh, resolution, Secra Negative Declaration Proposed Local Law. Okay, uh, whereas the town board of the town of Cornwall has before a proposed local law entitled. There's two resolutions, Steve?
Yeah, the Secra resolution and then the.
Yep, sorry, there. It's like, oh, man. Okay, um, okay. Whereas the town board of the town of Cornwall has before a proposed local law entitled the local law to amend the town of Cornwall code chapter one thirty-eight trees to add new article three entitled tree preservation. And whereas the proposed local law is subject, is a subject, is an action subject to Secra, and whereas the town board as lead agency is caused to be prepared an environmental assessment form EAF, parts one, two, and three. And whereas following due notice, the town board has conducted a public hearing on the said local law and heard all provision, of all persons interested in the subject matter thereof. And whereas the town board, as assisted by its consultants, has considered the potential environmental impacts of the proposed action. Now therefore, be resolved as follows. Town board accepts and approves the said EAF parts one, two, and three, and the town supervisor is authorized to sign the same. And two, that after considering all of the information presented to it, including the EAF, the town board adopts the negative declaration attached here too. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Mcarty?
Yes.
Ms. Mike Barazzi?
Yes.
Mr. Wojcicki?
Yes. Okay, next up, we have the resolution, local law, tree preservation law. Whereas the town board has considered the adoption of a local law entitled the local law to amend the town of Cornwall town code chapter one thirty-eight trees to add a new article three entitled tree preservation. Whereas the following due notice to the town board held a public hearing on the proposed local law, now therefore be resolved as follows. That the town board does hereby adopts the above local law, which.
Oh, if I could wait.
Yeah, oh, sorry, sorry.
You're right on your exact spot.
Okay, good.
adopts the above local law with the revision of deleting the words one-on-one from the definition of tree replacement plan, and then you can continue with the rest of it.
Okay, that the town board hereby adopts with the revision.
Yeah, you can just pick up with which said local law. We'll just use that as.
Sorry, um, which, which, which said local law with revisions to this, the, um, sorry, what's the section?
No, you, well.
Sorry, I should have.
See, you, you said the words already, that the town board hereby adopts the above local law. And then we inserted with the revision of deleting the words one-on-one from the.
Okay.
It's, right, and then you could just continue with which said local law and be done with it. You say, you don't need to say anything.
Gotcha. With the revision of deleting the one-on-one provision.
Josh, you don't need to do that. All you have to do is read the words, which said local law.
Okay, sorry, sorry. Which, which said local law shall be effective upon publication, posting, and filing in the office of Secretary of State of Illinois. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Mcarty?
Yes.
Ms. Mike Barazzi?
Yes.
Mr. Wojcicki?
Yes. Gotcha, sorry. Okay, there, so we got that, um. Okay, so we did that, that, that. We're doing workers' comp next week, um. We need to do the appraisal, so if I can get a motion to approve the quote from Sterling Appraisals Incorporated for four thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars.
So wait a minute, is that, that's our share? So do you know what the total amount was?
It's like eight thousand.
Was it, so we're, we're like fifty percent? Okay, thanks.
Yeah, so the way this works is Pat Seeley, Special Counsel, he gives us the invoice. That's our portion of the fifty percent of the cost sharing.
I understand. Okay.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Mcarty?
Yes.
Ms. Mike Barazzi?
Yes.
Mr. Wojcicki?
Yes, okay. All right, so next up, um, I have the resolution for the senior transportation, the amendment number three. Whereas the town annually enters into a contract with the county of Orange for services to provide transportation for senior citizens from Muggers Cottage.
You didn't fill in number four?
Work is coming.
That's next week.
Yeah, you really.
That's next week.
Yeah, no, you, you guys had asked for.
Yep.
Um, whereas the town annually enters into a contract with the county of Orange for services to provide transportation for senior citizens to Muggers Cottage and for related activities. And whereas the town of Cornwall has received an amendment number three to agreement for transportation services for residents sixteen and over from the office of the agent between the county of Orange and the town of Cornwall. Whereas the town board wishes to enter into said agreement number three to the agreement with the county, now therefore be resolved as follows. That the town board hereby agrees to enter into said agreement number three, a copy of which is N X two. That the town board hereby authorizes the supervisor to execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate the terms here. And can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Mcarty?
Yes.
Ms. Mike Barazzi?
Yes.
Mr. Wojcicki?
Yes. Okay, so, next up, can, uh, this would be setting the public hearing for the change of the Clinton Street stop sign. Whereas the town board of the town of Cornwall has a local law before it entitled the local law to amend town code chapter one forty-three entitled vehicle and traffic to switch stop signs at the intersection of Clinton Street and Union Street, from Clinton Street to Union Street. And whereas in the, in the order of the town board to act on said local law, it is necessary to introduce it and hold a public hearing upon it. Now therefore be resolved as follows. That the movement of this resolution does hereby introduce the proposed local law. Two, that a public hearing on the proposed local law be set for January sixteenth, twenty twenty-four at seven o'clock P M. And that due notice of the same is directed to be given by publication and posting. Can I get a motion to set the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Mcarty?
Yes.
Ms. Mike Barazzi?
Yes.
Mr. Wojcicki?
Yes. All right, um, Tim, I've been waiting on holiday lights. We're doing this. Ready?
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with that.
All right, can I?
I've talked to a lot of people on this trip, but I'm good.
All right, can I get a motion to approve the quote from RPC at a thousand per pole or seventeen thousand dollars?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Scott?
No.
Mr. Mcarty?
Yes.
Ms. Mike Barazzi?
Yes.
Mr. Wojcicki?
Yes. Okay, next up, we have the revised liquor authority notice for Jenny's Sports Bar and Grill. Can I get a motion to waive the thirty-day, uh, community notice?
So moved. Second.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Mcarty?
Yes.
Ms. Mike Barazzi?
Yes.
Mr. Wojcicki?
Yes. Um, can I get a motion to approve the boys' basketball staff salaries for twenty-three, twenty-four?
So moved. Did you ask, did you mean a motion?
Yeah, I just, yeah, so if I get a motion to approve.
Nobody's second here.
You made the motion.
Yeah, so that would be, I'm thinking a motion.
You need a second.
Yeah, can I get a motion to approve the boys' basketball staff salaries for twenty-three, twenty-four? That Laura Kirby has, so we have Mike Anderson at eighteen an hour, we have referees at seventeen an hour, and we have the scorekeeper, bookkeeper at sixteen an hour.
What was it last year, Dina?
We raised it by roughly a dollar.
A dollar?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, minimum wage went up.
Okay, all right, I'm, okay, that's all I want to know. Okay, so moved.
We have a first.
Second, I'm sorry.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Mcarty?
Yes.
Ms. Mike Barazzi?
Yes.
Mr. Wojcicki?
Yes. Can I get a move? All right, can I also get a motion to appoint Dylan Mannion to the position of full-time police officer at the annual rate of seventy-five thousand one hundred and sixty-seven dollars? Step four, effective twelve fifteen twenty-three.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Mcarty?
Yes.
Ms. Mike Barazzi?
Yes.
Okay, um, next, can I get a motion to approve warrant number twelve?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Mcarty?
Yes.
Ms. Mike Barazzi?
Yes.
Mr. Wojcicki?
Yes, is there any public comments? I'm not. No? Okay, um, all right, so actually, we've got, we have executive session, and then we need to go into closed session. Did you guys all get the email?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, okay. So, um, if I could get a motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel. Right, that should cover it all?
Well, it's, you're supposed to say the financial history or continued employment of a person or corporation employed by the, by the municipality. There's a particular language, but personnel will be.
Okay, can I get a motion to go into executive session to, uh.
Thank you.
To discuss personnel? All right, that works, thanks, Steve. And then, um, can I also get a motion, we'll rather go into closed session to seek advice of counsel?
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Mcarty?
Yes.
Ms. Mike Barazzi?
Yes.
Mr. Wojcicki?
So let me, did you all get a, so, all right, so this is.